Welcome to the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting for November the 8th, 2021. If you have a cellular phone, a mobile phone, please silence your phone so that we can give you our undivided attention and you ours. So, thank you for joining us this evening. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Ronnie, would you do our invocation?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you tonight again, thanking you for all the blessings you've bestowed upon us. We pray that you'll be with us tonight. Give us the wisdom to conduct the down's business, and we give you praise and honor for it. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. When that happens, you okay?
No.
Need to walk around. Your face is raised.
I'm good.
All right. Council, you have received the minutes of the October 11th Town Council meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
Hearing none, I'm leaving to approve.
Got a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. Public comment. Pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens are given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in this evening?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right. We will close the public comment portion of our agenda. Presentations. We're going to have a presentation. Jacana, would you like to wait until after the executive session to do that since we're going to vote on that later in the agenda? Or do you prefer to go ahead and make it happen?
We'll talk about this.
Okay. Well, come on, make it happen then. Just remember, I gave you a choice. I'm kidding. Huh? Okay. I just want to make it good for her.
Oh, either way is good with me, though.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we are excited to present our slate of events for our Christmas in Fort Mill. And we'll begin with our Fort Mill Christmas Village. It will be on Thursday, December the 2nd, from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. in downtown Fort Mill. From 5:00 to 8:30 p.m., you'll be able to enjoy food, holiday drinks, shopping with our vendors and downtown merchants, a trackless train, and kids' activities. And then at 5:30 p.m., we'll have our lighted children's parade on Main Street. This is the first time we've done that. And our tree lighting ceremony will follow that from the bandstand. And then at 6:00 p.m., you'll be able to enjoy entertainment on our stage on South White Street, featuring local schools, churches, dance groups, and individuals. And then also during that time, you'll be able to visit with Santa, our South Carolina Strawberry Queens, and Barry in the bandstand. And next, you'll see a map of the layout of the event for the evening. We'll have our Christmas vendor village set up in Veterans Park parking lot, and the green space will be open for parking for the public. And then we'll have our trackless train and a few food trucks located on North White. And then on South White, we'll have our entertainment stage. And on Main Street is where we'll have our lighted children's parade. It will start at the top of Main, near the Fort Mill Animal Hospital, and it will travel down to the bottom of Main, near the bandstand, where we'll flip the switch. The mayor and a few special guests will flip our switch to light our lovely town tree and our beautiful town decorations. And then we'll also have some more kids' activities on Main Street. And we have a few road closures for that. South White will be closed from noon to 10:00 to get the stage in. And then North White, Main, Confederate, and Academy will be closed from 3:00 to 10:00. And our Christmas vendor village, we're going to be accepting applications for that through Wednesday, November the 17th. We have a few spaces left. For our lighted children's Christmas parade, we're also accepting applications for that. And this is for families with children 10 years old and younger, and they're asked to dress up in Christmas attire with lights and decorations on their tricycles, bicycles, strollers, small wagons, that type of thing. And the parade will be staged, again, at the top of Main, and will travel to the bottom of Main, near the bandstand. And our South Carolina Strawberry Queens will pick their most decorated family entries to win prizes for that. And those applications are available on our town website. And then our Christmas village is going to feature food and drinks that will be provided by our downtown merchants at all of our wonderful restaurants. There's going to be also a limited number of food trucks, and we would like to have a small beer and wine trailer in the Christmas village, in the vendor village. And then, so we are seeking a resolution for public alcohol sales possession and consumption for that, and also for amplified sound for that event. And then next up, we have our 74th Annual Fort Mill Christmas Parade on Saturday, December the 4th, at 11:00. And we're accepting applications for it through November the 17th at 5:00 p.m. And we have our grand marshals for this year's parade is our 2021 Dixie Youth Baseball Division I double-A World Series Champions and their head coach, Ryan Smith. And these wonderful young men are very excited to be our grand marshals, and they feel very honored to have that bestowed upon them, so they thank y'all for that. And they are going to be riding in a trolley in our parade. And then also, our last year's grand marshal, Steve Caskey Wormy from the Fort Mill Barber Shop. We've invited him to ride in the parade this year since we didn't get to have our in-person event last year. Our parade route will begin at Tom Hall in Unity and travel through Main Street and historic downtown Fort Mill and North White Street, and then exit at Walter Elijah Park. And again, we're accepting applications through November the 17th at 5:00 for that. And our parade always features our wonderful local schools, businesses, queens, scouts, organizations, churches, and of course, Santa, and lots more fun stuff. And next up, you'll see our parade mount map for parade map route for that. And our primary street closures for that event is Tom Hall, Main, and North White. And then we have a few secondary street closures, Grace Forest, Monroe, White, Confederate Springs, Clayborne, and Massey from 10:45 to 1:00. Our next event is going to be our Santa Trolley Around Town. On Saturday, December the 11th, it will begin at 9:00 a.m., and you'll be able to check out our route at our town website. And also, we have an app that we'll be promoting on our social media so the public can follow us throughout the day to see where we're at. But our route will also be posted with a general guideline of times where we'll be at what time. And you'd see beautiful Ms. Trudy got to ride it last year as well as Ms. Cook. And it was just a fun day, and we really enjoyed going around town, seeing all our community out waiting for Santa to come through. And then our last event is going to be the Fort Mill Christmas Cookie Crawl on Saturday, December the 18th, from 10:00 to 2:00. And we let individuals and families receive, register to receive a cookie tin, and they'll travel around to 10 local participating businesses to receive one cookie at each location. And registration for that will begin on November the 29th. And we have 100 participants that we'll be accepting for that this year. So that event has grown. We had 50 wonderful families last year that loved every minute, and they were just so excited to do it. So we were happy to be able to open that up to more people this year. And we just want to say Merry Christmas from the Town of Fort Mill, and we just look forward to all of these wonderful events.
Jacana, thank you for the presentation and for all the work to pull this together. Jacana works extremely hard to make sure that our events are changing, evolving as our town is, and ensures that there's something for everybody. So I'm extremely grateful for that. Couple of questions. All that you've provided will be on our social media, right?
Right.
And our website. So if you were reading this this evening and you need a refresher, please find that at our Facebook page, our website, so that you can see where there's events and times will be held. We have inclement weather procedures that we would follow, and I'm certain we would also post those.
Right.
On our, if it were to rain out the parade, you know, it hasn't happened too many years that I've been in it, but it can. I'd like it to snow now.
Santa says he's already put in. It's going to be very beautiful.
Yeah. We've been in the downpours. The other thing is, I do think that as we have opened the amphitheater, that everyone would like to see us start expanding in that direction for space and other reasons. And after this year, we certainly will be. We already had reservations and projects in place, ready to roll, because we didn't get to do this last year. It's a special time for our community. You know, I think some of the changes are going to be a lot of work, a whole lot of work. But thank you for the effort that you're making. Council?
Again, there's a lot. It's one of those where every year I wonder how you're going to get any better than the year before, because you've really put your stamp on this, and doing event planning is definitely your wheelhouse. I have some concerns, honestly, and I know it's probably too late to change a lot of these things, but it seems like every year when we're doing the stuff at the bottom of Main Street, there's never enough time for the parents to swap out, to get front row seats for their kids. And adding a parade to it, and then we're going here and trying to navigate all the parents within a one hour, one and a half hour period, have some concerns. So I'm sure we'll come up with some logistics or ways for people to be able to be front and center for when their kids are presenting or singing for us. Other thing, Davey, you and I've talked, I think, everything we've done, making sure that the speakers are loud enough with anticipated crowds that we have, because every year the crowds grow, and so our speakers should grow with the size of the crowds to make sure they can hear everything wherever they happen to be. And then one other comment that I had in the Santa Trolley, have we added more time? Because I know we stayed behind schedule the entire time last year, because so many kids were coming out, and we couldn't go the speed limit. You were literally going five miles an hour during the whole route.
Yeah. We're actually condensing it a little bit, trying to hit just more of the main areas in each location, and just working on that a little bit.
I think that'll be a great way to do it. People would come to him. They didn't expect him to drive by his front door. They were willing to go find Santa.
Right.
Once or twice even.
Right.
So I think that's a great way to try to make sure we stay on track, because they certainly were hoping to track them along the way, too. So, okay, I'm glad, I appreciate you addressing that.
Trudy?
Jacana, I really enjoyed being on a trolley with Santa last year, and if you don't have a volunteer, I volunteer again this year.
Well, we would love to have you.
We need Mrs. Claus to be back.
You go be Ms. Claus.
Yes. Have a standing date every year.
Any further questions or comments for Jacana? Hearing none, Jacana, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate you. Next on our agenda, we have an executive session. Please note, council may take actions on executive session items listed on the agenda when we come back into public session. Our executive session this evening is a discussion on personnel contractual matters regarding the town attorney. I will need a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion when we move into executive session.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. We will return shortly. Thank you so much. All right. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken, no decision was made in our executive session. I would like to have a motion to return to regular session.
Make a motion to return to regular session.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. We will now move into old business, item number one. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County Tax Map Number 0200404004 from R15 Residential to LC Local Commercial. The location is 314 White Street. Penelope, would you like to talk to us about that?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is second read-in for the rezoning of 314 North White Street. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Has anything changed, Penelope?
No, ma'am.
That's our first read-in.
No, ma'am.
Council, do you have any questions for Penelope?
Because of the audience here today, do you mind explaining what that difference is? Because we have a few young students.
Yeah, we do.
So that way they understand that.
I'd be more than happy to explain. This property was an old gas station, wreck or service, for many years in the Town of Fort Mill, located at 314 North White Street. And so the zoning was basically residential, even though it's been for years a commercial property. So it was a non-conforming use. We have a new developer now that would like to revitalize the building to keep the unique architectural standard and to be able to have a chicken sandwich shop. And I believe it's okay, Jason, like Bossy Beulah is something that they're looking into coming to the Town of Fort Mill. And so they needed to rezone the property, and they asked for the rezoning application. They went through the process. You go through the Planning Commission for recommendation, and then you go to the Town Council for two readings. The first read-in, we had it, we held a public hearing, had any opportunity for people to speak. And tonight, it's second read-in, no changes. A traffic impact analysis has been done as well. And we're so excited to be able to have another business close to downtown, near the park, and still keep the local history of the Town of Fort Mill with the existing building.
And for those, thank you for asking for that. For those that are familiar with town, this is a good fit for that location. It's a good fit, and those of us that grew up having businesses all along that area, we're excited to see that occur again.
It is close to my house.
Frequent flyer over here.
And we all need more chicken restaurants.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Well, Penelope, thank you for covering that so succinctly. Any further questions? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion for this particular.
I make a motion to accept old business item number one.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a couple of seconds. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
New business item number one, first reading. An ordinance to adopt a revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act 2020, Act Number 176. Chris Pettit is our expert. Chris, would you like to talk to us?
Yes, Mayor. South Carolina Journal Assembly adopted Act 176, which goes into effect January 1st, 2022. The Act requires all municipalities and counties that impose a business license tax to revise their ordinances in order to align with the Act's standard of requirements that are standard across the state. The Municipal Association of South Carolina subsequently took the Act and developed a model ordinances for municipalities to adopt that conform to those standard requirements. So what's presented to you this evening for first reading is that model ordinance adapted to the Town of Fort Mill. There's, the main difference, I think, from our current business license program is the due date when business license fees are due. As of today, our current program, business license fees would be due at the end of February. After the adoption of this standard ordinance, the model ordinance, business license fees would be due at the end of April. So instead of the end of February, fees are now due statewide at the end of April. There are numerous other small changes. Most of those are sort of staff or administrative side changes, but that is the biggest public-facing change that'll be made. Otherwise, just happy to answer any questions that you may have on this change in the business license ordinance.
Any questions for Chris?
So how are we planning on communicating this to people who currently have a business license in the town to give them a heads up?
Sure. So towards the end of every year, we send out renewal notices to any existing business. And with that renewal notice, we can have information in there about the change. The existing businesses, aside from having a few, couple more months to pay their license, they really shouldn't notice a change, particularly this year, given the fees. So one of the requirements of the Act is that with some of the changes you're making, you can't receive a windfall in extra revenue from a business. So our fees are pretty much staying the same. They are staying the same that they were. So they won't really notice any huge jump in fees. They won't notice anything except they really have two more months to pay. But that'll all be communicated to them at the end of the year when we send out renewal notices.
And how will that lag of two months affect our budget cycle?
Same thing.
So a lot of people are, so currently, the fees are due in February. A lot of people think, starting January, oh, I got to pay my business license. So we receive revenue January, February, and into March sometime. So the anticipation is, we'll still receive some revenue, January, February, March. Certainly, they'll need to pay by April. If they don't, they'll continue on. It isn't going to measurably make any difference to us. The budget will be fine with some of that lag in revenue.
Unlike some of the other communities around here, rely heavily on their business tax to even make budget. We're not in that same boat.
Most of our money in business licensing comes from monies that are actually collected by the Municipal Association and given to us in big checks. You know, our total, we collect about $4 million in business licensing, but most of that comes from Municipal Association, and that really wouldn't be impacted by this. So it should be negligible, you know, that change.
I think it's important for those that'll view this on the recycle, that business licenses are important. Several years ago, 2011, we had a pretty ugly hailstorm here in Fort Mill. A lot of roofs were torn up, and there, right afterwards, there weren't enough local companies to address all the roofs that had holes. And we had a lot of contractors come into town that were providing roofs that weren't following the guidelines set by the state for the safety and the longevity of the products they were using. People in town don't know the difference unless you're, you know, going out and looking up those codes and those ordinances. You might be paying the same price for a roof that's only going to last you a year or two than the guy next door that bought one with a lifetime warranty. That's just one example. The others are really important from the standpoint of structural safety and ensuring that our community is provided the best service from businesses that aren't going to walk away with their money. So business licensure is important, and it's important when you're looking for someone to do business for you, that you ask them, do you have a license with the town?
Is there a way to back up on what the mayor just said for me as a homeowner doing work to verify that somebody has a license if we're starting to look, even before you actually talk to them? If I wanted to hire someone, is there on our site?
You have to provide, if you don't have an established building to hold your license on the wall, then you have to have it on your person or in your vehicle that you are operating out of to, if someone asks them, you show it to them.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, before you ever open up the door to that person to have that conversation.
As of right now, you would have to call our staff, and they could tell you. We have 1,400-plus businesses that have a license, so a list is very comprehensive. But as of right now, you can call the town and.
And it's constantly moving as well, especially after the pandemic.
Yeah. And unfortunately, could we publish the list? Sure. But a lot of times, it's difficult, because it'll be Chris Pettit doing business as Chris is roofing, or, you know, there's a lot of weird naming. So you may see something on the list and not actually know it's the actual business you're talking to. But feel free to call us, and we can answer all those questions.
Thank you. Okay. If there are no further questions, I would like to entertain a motion on new business item number one.
I make a motion to accept new business item number one.
Second.
We have a motion to accept in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number two, a resolution accepting the streets within the Mason's Bend Phase 1 subdivision into the Town of Fort Mill's street maintenance system. Penelope is our expert. Penelope, what can you tell us?
Yes, ma'am. We have a number of resolutions tonight. So the first one is for Phase 1 of Mason's Bend. The developer, the applicant of this request is Crescent Mason's Bend. Mr. James Martin is here tonight. Phase 1 is the Mason's, a portion of Mason's Bend Drive, Buck's Quarry Court, and a portion of Beebalm Trail. They basically was submitted to us, and all the roads are recorded prior to the establishment of a street acceptance policy. Therefore, they're exempt from the inspection fee and surety bond. We've reviewed the application. It's complete and accurate. The Phase 1 subdivision is 100% built out, which meets all the standards for the street acceptance policy. The maintenance agreements for landscape medians and other non-standard right-of-way sections have been completed and recorded. And also, the Public Works and Utilities Department have reviewed the roads, submitted for this acceptance, and found them to be in compliance. Should Town Council vote to approve this resolution, accepting the streets, the developer would enter into a one-year warranty period during which time they are responsible for any maintenance to the streets. Upon the closing of the warranty period, the town would take over the maintenance responsibility for the streets. So tonight, in front of, it's your decision to approve the resolution of accepting the Mason's Bend Phase 1.
Okay. And council members, you heard and can see on your agenda that this is the same description for each of the business items, 2, 3, 4, and 5. They're just different phases and different areas within this subdivision. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct, Mayor.
Good, good. Any questions for Penelope?
So given that we're taking ownership of roads that are at the front of this neighborhood, and I understand the build-out being fairly complete, but where are we on the rear of it? Because we know the construction traffic's still going to be adding to the wear and tear with all the trucks.
We're very close with Phase 4 and 6, I believe. I'm not sure about 5, A and B. If you, if, if. James Martin's here, yes. That's what I'm sorry. Come on. He's a problem.
Join us, Mr. Martin.
It's a pleasure to be back in front of you.
So nice to see you.
Good to see you. A lot of familiar faces up here. But Phase 5, I don't know who's controlling the, but if you go up to the top, the back entrance is fully paved and all the construction traffic. All of the homes now being built are in the back, and so they're coming in off of Sutton View Road, off of Sutton. So that was what delayed us bringing forth all the earlier phases. We couldn't walk those and get those ready to be submitted until the back entrance was in, because there was so much construction traffic on those. So that's been open for about a year now, the back entrance. Yeah, 5A. All the roads are now fully paved, so there's two different access points in the community.
I like that. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Before we vote, I would like to challenge council and staff to take a look at, once again, review the impact fees. We currently do not charge anything in the transportation portion of impact fees, and the town doesn't have a renewable source of revenue for long-term maintenance of streets that we are taking on. I appreciate that the developers put them in the condition that they're acceptable to us, but we really don't have a way of funding those, because we're not like the state. We don't do transportation for a living. So I would like the challenge to be that we review the impact fees within the next 30 days and take a look at what options are available to us to see that that funding is available when the road maintenance is required.
I do not disagree. I would kind of like to piggyback on that, and it's part of what we'll have to do for the due diligence for impact fees, is making sure what our cost to serve for this is. There is a lot of roads here. Making sure our budget, that we're setting aside the funds as we get these larger neighborhoods. We know Massey will be coming before too long if they ever fix all the road issues in there, every day. But yeah, as we start looking to this, this is a lot. I mean, if you end up with a patch of this or a section of roadway that is faulty, and we're taking responsibility, and we don't do roads for a living, how are we, we don't know the cost of it. So I challenge us, as we review this for our impact fee discussion on transportation, that we also know what our true cost to serve is for a given area of roadway maintenance. So, you know, a mile, two miles, whatever you want to put.
And this has nothing to do with Mason's Bend.
No, no.
It's beautiful, and you've done a super job. So thank you so much for.
Back in Phase 6, right on the bar, just save it for me.
It's all good.
I'm just adding this up as I'm flipping through the thing. I'm just adding this up as I'm flipping through the thing here. So it's right around a five-mile stretch with all the little roads and everything we're taking in there. And you figure it's about a million dollars a mile to repay, strip a road and repave a road. So that's, that's over a $5 million hit that we'd have to the budget if something went sideways. We'd have to redo a section of that.
And Ms. Cook, to answer your question, we also provide, after the Town Council accepts roads, we do an asset documentation that we give to Shontae Waller, the Finance Director. So she knows exactly the length of the roads and based on the cost estimate of that road that we have accepted.
Okay. And how do we communicate with the HOA when there is one of this transition and what's taking place and what is changing for them once we take over the roads?
Well, that's a good question. We haven't, you know, in my time being here, two and a half years, you know, I'm not directly talking to the HOA. You know, I'm directly talking to the developer. And typically, the developer informs the neighborhood, hey, you know, the town is now responsible for your roads. So we don't have communication from the Planning Department. Now, I don't know if other departments have that communication with an HOA, but from the street acceptance policy application, the contact information is the developer. Oftentimes, we get citizens that just call the Planning Department or Utilities Department and ask, you know, is that a town road? Is it a county road? Or is it a state road?
Or we get emails. Or we get emails asking...
Or you get emails. Yes, yes. So...
And that's kinda why I'm asking, because not always is the developer as open and easy to work with as where we have today and with the HOA. So I think that if we have a statement from the town that's almost a template letter that says we've taken over the roads and here's what's gonna be expected from staff, from the town versus the developer, whoever. I think if we can draw that line in the sand real quickly, then it'll help prevent some of the emails and meetings we get pulled into.
And another little tidbit, if you go to York County GIs, they do, you know, once they get all the paperwork, it identifies it. So for the average citizen, if they wanna use the York County GIs, they can see if it's a state road, county road, or a town road.
I think given the definition of as to what that means when we do take over a road also. That doesn't mean we're gonna go in there and widen anything. We're not putting extra parking or anything like that. And we're maintaining the existing road.
That'd be a great question.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. We're getting enough HOAs with now that we need to.
All right. Any further questions for Penelope? Hearing none. Barry, may I ask successively without a revisitation?
I would do them individually.
I will do them individually, but I mean, can I, without revisiting the whole discussion?
Oh, yes, yes.
Thank you. New business item number two, I would like a motion, please.
I make a motion to accept new business item number two.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Those opposed, nay. None. New business item number three, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to accept new business item number three.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New business item number four, can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion to accept new business item number four.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. And new business item number five, can I have a motion, please?
To round it all out, I accept new business item number five.
All right. Now I have a second over here. All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much, Penelope. And for those of you being here to answer questions, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
And if you never drove down in there, it's a beautiful development.
It is.
I haven't been on Sutton View. I gotta go to the back one.
That's nice.
I go by.
Shontae, thank you for being here in case we had questions on that, too. New business item number six, a resolution designating the main, North White, South White Veterans Parking Lot as the site of a public event on Thursday, December the 2nd, 2021, from 5:00 PM until 8:30 PM, in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed, and to authorize a special event permit for live music and sound amplifying equipment. Jacana, this is the same from the presentation earlier. Is that correct? Does anyone have a question or a comment that they need to make?
Can I make an amendment to it?
Well?
Take out the alcohol sales?
We can do that, Mayor, and Mr. Helms. I will tell you that the Main Street merchants were approved for four Main Street jams in 2021, one being designated for November the 27th, which is Thanksgiving weekend. Staff found that out, realized that recently. And quite honestly, with the events we've put on since the spring, coming out of COVID, trying to get these events put out, we've held events from at Walter Wildlife Park, our downtown area. We've added new events that we didn't have in the past, like weekends on Main, Second Saturday Service. We've extended our farmer's market dates to last, an extended period of time. And we've had to have staff for every one of those. And we have greatly utilized our staff to the point where we're having difficulty finding additional, you know, having them come in and work these additional events. We had the opportunity to work with the Main Street merchants. If they, you know, they ask if they could partner with us in this event in December, they would gladly cancel their event in November. If you would like to amend this, certainly you have the right to do that, and we'll go back and...
And we're talking about selling alcohol at businesses on Main Street, not having a stand set up somewhere else in the park?
They would be selling anyway on that date and during that event in their businesses. It would be difficult to oversee that and make sure that no one's leaving those businesses and working their way into the event anyway.
I think what he's asking is different. I think he's asking, will they open as they normally do and follow their normal business protocol? Or will there be additional locations in the Main Street area by which they're selling? Will there be beer truck? Will there be a tent? Will there be tables?
It will be a trailer like we used in every other event. It would be placed in the, if you remember the presentation, the vendor...
Village.
Village out in the parking lot at Veterans Lot. It will be in that away from the Main Street area and/or the stage itself on White Street.
I agree with Councilman Ron. I have zero problem with any of the events, and they've handled them beautifully up to this date. I have zero complaints. But I do think the tree lighting event, the Christmas Village event, has always been focused on schoolchildren, church handbell choirs. I don't agree with combining the two, and I know this is not a surprise to you. I just don't. I think there have to be events that are solely for certain participants, and then there are events for others.
Counsel, I'd like for you to weigh in on your thoughts as well.
I don't disagree with what you guys are saying. I would kind of piggyback on that with my comments earlier. It's a short night to get a lot done. You know, you're talking about staffing over tax from all the events we're doing. And honestly, I don't see that council has ever said we had to do X number of events. So I think if we need to pull back, that's a decision that we need to make. But given that this is such a short night to try to get everything into, I believe that becomes a distraction and different purpose for the evening than what we're truly here to do, which is celebrate the children and the birth of Christ in the tree light. I just, I think it gives a mixed message. And I feel like we have done a phenomenal job supporting our businesses on Main Street and local merchants from the area. And we can certainly do some in other ways. I just feel like this is not the appropriate time. There's not enough time, and it's not the right atmosphere for Christmas.
So is the truck, the food truck or the beer truck would be over in the park, over Veterans Park where the farmer's market is?
Yes, where the food vendors would be, the food trucks.
It's just one, there would be multiple trucks.
Where the Santa train is. Where the Santa train is.
Well, the Santa train, yes, is on White Street. This is over in the Veterans Lot.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the business on Main Street selling their alcohol.
They're licensed to do that.
Right. And I just don't...
It's a family being.
Yeah. I just don't see a beer truck out where the kids and stuff's gonna be.
I will say, some of the, with me traveling for work a lot, there are some places that you buy a cup that you know you can take it outside, but then there. So to where, in some of those instances, alcohol can be served and come outside of a building. Maybe all it is for us in this situation is just relaxing the standards with some type of ordinance that for that evening, they can bring them in and out of the business without serving with a separate truck. I'm not sure of how to make that work. I'm like you, the truck is kind of my bigger issue, but...
I'm trying to think, there's some, there's something, I remember talking about this before, you know, about actual customers walking outside the door, and it's a legal issue with their licensure, is it not? That that's really kinda difficult to accomplish, to allow people to go, because they're licensed to serve on the premises.
Yeah.
You know, like at dinner, and not to grab and carry. So I think the licensure part might be a little complicated if we didn't host the way it's been proposed. And again, you know, we wouldn't have a downtown if it weren't for the investment and the hard work of these merchants downtown. I'm not opposed to that. I'm just saying I think the coupling of the event with that is not a good feel for me.
No, but the people who are gonna wanna go get a beer are gonna go get a beer. You're not gonna, I mean, I think if you picked a thousand people, there might be a hundred people. And they're gonna do like the hot cider, something like that.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, I don't see this turning into a big old jam fest down there.
And we haven't had anything like that. They've been managed really well. I just don't see it as a good...
So as somewhat of a compromise, when I look at the way the resolution is worded, it says in which alcoholic beverages may be sold, possessed, and consumed. Is there a way that we can do that without having an additional beer truck out at Veterans Park next to the train to do that? So that it still allows that consumption on Main Street, but then it is purchased from the local businesses? And does that still cover within their area of being able to walk outside the door with a drink?
Further away from the actual stage and the activities for the children.
Right at the parade.
Yeah, we do.
I think if you're asking if you could amend the ordinance to take out the sale of alcoholic beverages, but leave in the possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages, is that what you're asking?
Yes, I think that's probably...
I think that would be fine to do that in a resolution, but I think that's not proper under their license. Cause they all have own premises licenses.
I agree. Okay. We've been through that, the four.
Okay.
So I think it's either all or nothing.
Okay. Thank you for the advice. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Barry. Counsel?
And I just wanna clarify one thing. In the vendor village, the vendor village is gonna be set up in the Veterans Park in the life. And the beer wine truck is gonna be at the back of that. It's not on North White where the train and all that is.
It's gonna be up closer to Clayburn?
Mm-hmm.
Right. It's, you know, where the Veterans Parking Lot is, we're actually putting, the vendors just kind of around that area. People can just walk around there and just use the green space for parking. And then, you know, the beer wine truck is just going to the back of that lot. Kind of where the cordages are.
Right. Up closer to the old founders building.
And we're making the assumption, but I'd like to clarify, the vendor that is providing or that you have pulled into this to be able to serve, it is one of our Main Street businesses, correct?
And the only reason we're really requesting this is because they made money off of the jams, and we wanted to allow them to do this to be able to recoup some of the money that they would be losing from not holding the joint.
Yeah, I'll remove my amendment.
I don't have a motion at all. You had asked, could you do something with an amendment? I need a motion.
I won't make one.
You won't make one, all right? Anybody else care to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number six.
Second.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion to...
Approve.
Approve, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
It's all right. It's okay. Business item number six, and I have a second. All those in favor, please...
I do have an additional question. Will we be cutting off alcoholic sales prior to 8:30?
Yes, we will stop it at eight. We always try to stop at 30 minutes before and then... Should've put that in there, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? We have a motion on the table to approve new business item number six as it is written. And we have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That ends our business items. We have one information, well, yes, we have one information discussion item. Capital Projects Update, Davey Broom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna give a brief update on where we stand with our current capital projects. I'll begin with the project that we were winding down. We spent over a year working on this project. It's the Walter Wildlife Park upgrades. The final piece to this puzzle is the amphitheater. The photo you see here, we finally got our roof installed on the amphitheater. It is a metal roof. The shrubbery around the site has been completed as well. Part of the project included some trees that were, had to be removed during the course of the project, have been replaced by a similar size, or excuse, not similar size, but similar type of hardwood tree. So we've got additional trees on the site. Again, we are in the, as far as the project's been completed, 100%. We are currently going through the finalizations of having our, have Kekkingwood go through and approve the final payment to Simon and Watson Construction, who has worked, who's done the work for us. So we anticipate that being completed within the next week or two. We, I met with Kekkingwood today. We did the final walkthrough. There was a couple of just minor items that pertain to the landscaping and shrubbery that needed to be touched up before we sign off on the final approval. Once that final payout has been completed, I'll come back to you with a final report on this project, letting you know where we stood within the timeline as well as on the budget. We were over budget on this project, but those numbers could change a little bit based on closing out all of the overall project and numbers themselves. So I will provide an update as soon as those numbers are presented to me. The next project that we have going on is the Banks Athletic Park. It's currently under construction. Again, it consists of four baseball, softball fields with a scoring tower, a basketball court, playground, picnic shelter, and two restroom facilities, and quite a bit of parking. We have two parking lots to the tune of 315 parking spaces. Again, the projected timeline is to be completed mid-2022 at this time. The overall project's an $11 million project, and just wanna remind everyone that the land was secured through donation and at no cost to the town.
Quick question on that, Davey. Did we figure out a place for overflow parking if needed? If we find out that's not enough parking spaces available during a tournament or large events?
We have not determined an overflow parking area at this time. We, we need to see what, 315 spaces.
That's a lot.
How it, how it works. And we do not want to utilize the neighborhood if at all possible.
Yeah, I'm just seeing people on the road, so...
You know, we have to plan this just right, the events at this location, so that we don't overcrowd our parking area. We don't wanna, again, overflow into the neighborhood if at all possible. I provided some additional photos. You can see the construction site. You can see the construction site. Most of the grading has been completed. They're still working to, on the next photo, you can see that the standalone restroom is under construction, as well as the next photo, some of the parking lots are already in before being, before asphalt being put down. So they're being inspected at this time, but they're being utilized by the construction crew. So they're not, they have minimal vehicles on the main thoroughfare through Waterside. They're utilizing these parking lots for their crew and staff. The next photo, we're getting a few questions from the neighbors. We want to put this on our website, but I wanted to present it tonight. This is a mock-up panel, if you will, providing a snapshot of what the brickwork's gonna look like, as well as the type of siding and the color of the siding. This panel will also include roofing material to give you an idea of what the roofs are gonna look like. That was still under construction as we met last week, so it had not been installed yet. I haven't been by there yet. We have a meeting out there scheduled for tomorrow. They may have it up by then. But as we get more photos, I'll make sure that I provide those to counsel. The next project we're, that we're working on is the tennis facility at the YMCA at the complex. I spoke with ESP Associates, who is handling the design work for the six renovation of four courts, the addition of two new courts, as well as a restroom facility that includes an office and a storage area for this, for the tennis instructors. I was told we should be seeing the final, or at least the construction plans for staff review within the next couple of days or so. Once we receive those plans, staff would go through and make sure that they meet all of our specifications, as well as all building codes. And we'll provide feedback to the engineer and architect from, you know, after that. Once we get everything under, all of the comments made and the project set up the way it should be set up, we will be ready to put it out for bid. We expect the estimated time of completion for this overall project would be second quarter of 2022. We want to be able to get this underway. We feel like we can get the grading and the restroom facility underway over the winter. And then when the spring rolls around, have the tennis facility brought in or the tennis courts installed at that time. We do not know at this point if the supply line backup or supply chain backup will affect or how much it will affect this project. So right now, we still have the estimated time of second quarter. It will, as we get into the project, we'll have more updates on that.
Question for you, Annette. And you and I had talked a few weeks back now, but I don't remember seeing, but will we have included in this any type of seating for visitors that are coming to watch or people waiting for their next match? Any of that, is that gonna be covered in the scope of work?
Yes, ma'am.
And will they include sun shades of some sort?
Yes, there are some, there's some seating worked into the overall plan between the courts with some shading features for those seats.
Okay, looking forward to that. Thank you.
Any other questions on that project, particular project? The next project is our wastewater treatment plant upgrades. I've asked our utilities director, Greg Russian, to join us tonight. He is here.
I wonder who that stranger was back there.
I will, I want to provide you with the material that he brought tonight.
I was gonna say, can we have some water samples for the students here?
You can have them.
Hey, they're still young, they can recover.
Sorry, ma'am.
No, no, I got it.
As I was told tonight, this is the material of the membrane of the photo that you see here. And the photo is showing the membrane cartridge installation, and I will gladly turn this over to Greg to explain what that actually does.
To talk over our heads real quick.
All right, Greg, what does it do?
I was gonna say.
Let's keep it high.
Hey, they may be high schoolers, but we're third graders, so keep it here.
Basically, this is the back end of the plant. We run it through screens because the membranes do not like grit or sand particles. So once it gets here, it's, the phosphorus is taken out to meet our permits. And that's happened biologically. And you get to here, and basically, what you're holding is a straw. And the vacuum is placed to the middle, and it's a very mild vacuum, it's four to five PSI. And we have enough cartridges there to produce four and a half million gallons a day.
How big is the dimensions of that thing?
The cartridge or, let's see, 10 by 10?
Oh, that's a pretty good size, yeah.
And there are four per channel, and we've got four channels.
And how can you guys change them?
Lightly loaded every 10 years or more. The experience with them is very good. And again, if you don't overload them or put chemicals or grit to them, they'll last a long time.
Next photo is the biological nutrient reactor aeration testing. If Greg would like to speak on this portion.
It's just the aeration. I mentioned the biological processes that take the nitrogen and phosphorus out. We have to feed the bugs. We call them bugs, it's bacteria. And we have to make them happy so they'll eat everything coming in.
And the next photo shows the biological nutrient reactor in the closest portion to us. The membrane facility just past that, and then the ultraviolet structure just beyond that.
You can see the crane structure over here, that's for lifting the membrane cartridges out for maintenance. And UV is over here with the roof. It's kind of hard to see with the background of the trees there. But any questions? We've got a new generator, electrical building. The aeration you just saw was in the right side, surrounded by the orange fence.
And then last, but certainly not least, the photo here is the installation of the UV ultraviolet disinfection system.
Prevents us from having to put chlorine and then dechlorinate after that. UV just exposes the flow continuously to ultraviolet light to kill all the remaining bugs that may be there.
And so, Mayor and Counsel, the overall benefits of this project, this has been an ongoing project for a year, year and a half?
Construction.
Yeah, construction project. We're increasing the treatment capacity to 4.5 million gallons per day. It was also built to be expandable up to 6 million gallons per day. It is more efficient, so it's reduced power consumption, increased treatment efficiency to comply with more stringent regulatory permits, permit limits. And then also increased safety, reduction of on-site chemicals. So it'll also have remote monitoring on a 24/7 operation in control.
Any completion date?
Completion date right now is...
Total completion is March, April timeframe.
We didn't have...
Of 2022.
Yeah. And then substantial completion will be done probably mid-January.
We are 91, a little over 91% complete with the overall project. And we, which says we're still ahead of schedule and on budget, so that's good news.
That's good.
That's really good news. And Davy, thank you for bringing up the positives surrounding this. As we've just been through an election cycle, many people talk about infrastructure and how they worry that we're not keeping up. I do think this, in my 17 years of serving our community, is the largest, both from time and money, project that I'm aware of that we have conducted within that time. It is to bring us efficiency. It is to get the best technology here. It is to expand the capability and capacity of this unit. I'm very proud to hear that it's on schedule, on budget, and will provide the infrastructure needs that our community is expecting from us. We did not wait for CARES dollars or federal funding to assist with this. We took care of business as we do within our community, and I'm very proud of that. So I just want to make sure we highlight that. And Davy, thank you for bringing up the positives related to this project.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you, Greg. Great job. Great job. Is that the end of our updates?
Yes, ma'am, that is the end of the presentation.
All right, Jamie?
That is a great project. And I think it's like the closest you can get to without drinking the water, to be drinkable water.
That's what I was gonna say. The students who are here tonight, you guys have been selected to be able to take the water samples that come out the other end.
No.
But the one, that, because we have to get them circulated, it gets discharged into the river.
Greg has said that a long time.
But it's cleaner than the water that's in the river.
Yeah, it'll be much better than the river water, that's for sure.
We will return it better than we took it.
Absolutely, that's good.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a good project.
Maybe probably cleaner than the water in the river.
Oh, it is.
Oh, it is. Any further comment for the good of the whole?
Oh, I'm sorry. Just holidays are coming up, please be mindful, more traffic that's gonna be coming through the town and outside visitors who are gonna be enjoying all the things that we enjoy on a daily basis. And that's all. It's getting colder. Make sure you check your HVAC. Get it charged up before you turn it on, because you don't want to have a cold night.
Nope. Lisa?
So I will acknowledge the kids in the back, because my job as a parent is to embarrass people. So which school are you guys from?
The Town of Orange.
Awesome, what class?
Government.
Government, who's your teacher?
Frank Ambrose.
Mr. Ambrose, all right, yes, know him well, so I'm glad to see that he got you guys here. I will say, I had the privilege of doing interviews for High School 101, mock interviews last week, and sat in Coach Lindax's class. And it was a blast. It was, I was very impressed with how well the students came in, presented themselves, tried to get a job from me. The thank you notes that they sent afterwards really brought me to tears. So it was great to be face to face. It was the first day they were allowing people back in the schools. So it was nice to be a guest in that school. And thank you guys for coming and hearing this. Yes, I know Mr. Ambrose.
But I don't see nobody taking notes.
Somebody back there was.
I saw a couple people. I watched.
I was gonna say, we can certainly check, but thank you guys for coming and for staying for the whole time.
Absolutely.
I will say, we've had some students that bailed on us when the executive session hit. So thank you for staying the whole time and being involved with our community.
Absolutely. I hope that each of you will view this as an opportunity to become involved.
Absolutely.
Trudy?
I'm just glad to be back.
All right, absolutely, we're glad to have you back. Chris?
I'm good.
Ronnie?
It was a pleasure watching amphitheater. Every day I wrote about it, a little bit more, a little bit more, a little bit more. So that's all I got.
I got a couple of things to wrap us up. Veterans Day event on the 11th. We're all sitting here today because of the sacrifices made by those that went before us. That is a date in time that we all need to remember, you know, that someone else gave their lives for us. I'd like to compliment the communications effort on the leaf collection. Sounds like a silly thing, but when those leaves clog up those stormwater drains, we have issues. So thank you for doing that. And it looks like we're gonna be doing leaves up close to Christmas at my house, so appreciate that. We did have an increase in some of our costs. I'd like to make known that we don't increase costs unless a vendor or an increase has come to us. I'm very proud of the way we manage financially here at the Town of Fort Mill. We work hard to keep the costs to our residents as low as possible. We don't raise taxes arbitrarily, haven't done so but once in 20 years, no matter who tells you, we have not. Thank you, Shontae and staff, for working hard. We work to minimize passing along those costs, but there are times that's just impossible to do. I would also like to thank Duke Energy. They had an outage that was scheduled. I used to work for Duke Energy, and I understand the need when we've got crossarms on the taller poles, holding the high voltage lines. And they do have wear and tear from weather and need to be replaced. They had scheduled this outage earlier, and it was going to impact our businesses downtown. They pulled back and said they would wait at our request and came back, did this outage, got it done really quickly. Communication from the town was excellent on that as well. Thank you for the patience of our community. Can't thank our water line folks enough. You know, we've had a couple of breaks recently. Guys, there's no reason to go dig up a water line because you think it might break. You dig it up when it does, and you make that repair, and that's good cost management to the community.
And it's always at 1:00 in the morning, so...
Yes, never fails. We did receive a very nice note from the Hardy Hops event that we helped to provide. They said it was a huge success in collecting money for a very good cause, and that everyone loved being in our downtown area and enjoying what we were able to provide.
They had a great shirt. I got one.
Good, good. Guys, we live in a wonderful place. No matter how often we all get up and fuss about the traffic, or fuss about this, that, or the other, I can't think of a better place to live. And it's because of all of our community and the efforts of our staff and our council, I am proud to be in Fort Mill and to have an opportunity to serve. Given that, for those of you on the back row, Lisa had just written something that was on my note. The one time I'm not proud is when we do have elections and so few people take it upon themselves to go and vote. It's so simple. It is, it is a responsibility to go vote. It is. You need to take that sacred opportunity and vote. And don't do it blindly. Try to find out exactly what it is you're voting for, but do so. Because so often, we forget that that is really out there on the edge of freedom, that we have an opportunity to vote for the people that make the decisions. I'm grateful for those that have allowed us to serve, but I'm ashamed that so few people went to the polls. So take that responsibility to heart, please. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
I'll suck it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. I hope you have a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you.